Go ahead. I'd like to call October sixteenth, twenty twenty-three, Triton School Board Meeting in order. Please rise for the pledge. I pledge allegiance to the party of the United States of America and to the Republic of America. For my name is Andrea Ingris, well, let's let it begin. Thank you. Recognition of visitors, open forum. I didn't receive anything.
I sent a email to every board member requesting to speak. You'll send it to your school emails.
I guess as long as you're all here, I'll let you speak. I I haven't checked my email all day, sorry, but. Um, my understanding there's to be a paper form, but we'll we'll let you go ahead. Please.
I would just.
I think, is that okay? Yeah, just come up, state your name, who you are, what you represent.
No. My name is Jill Rosopolis. I represent the E S D Triton Union. Um, the reason I'm here tonight is I would like simply to have our voice be heard. Um, as you all know, my name is Jill Rosopolis, and I have served this district. Um, for eleven and a half years. I say served because for those of us in the educational field, we are serving the greater good. And we have a belief in helping others and in building a strong and safe community for our children. We know that children plus a strong school district. Are the foundation of a community. Um, educational assistance are the tenders of that foundation. Unfortunately, Triton is now the lowest paying employer of educational support staffs, bus drivers, and custodians. Not just in Dodge County, but in within a fifty mile radius of Dodge Center. Triton's educational support staff is asking for a competitive wage and benefit package. Many within our bargaining unit financially struggle and have to work two or three jobs. The irony of this that this is, is that many educational support staff go out of their way to help students who are hungry or have other needs that we use our own personal resources to help meet. One of the district's goals is to retain and attract highly qualified employees who contribute to excellence. This is taken directly from the district's webpage. Retain and attract highly qualified employees who contribute to excellence. When we are so underpaid compared to every district in our area, not to mention the private sector. How will you attract, let alone retain these employees? So I call on you, the school board, to take significant steps to meet the district's goals. To meet this part of the Cobra vision. And to give our students the best chance possible to reach their potential by choosing to contribute to excellence. As a school board member, it is your duty to choose, to determine what kind of school and community Triton truly is. Thank you for your time.
Um, motion approved agenda.
I'll move.
One second.
Motion from Jim, second from Rebecca. Any questions, comments? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries, Cobra pride. Yeah, we had our first profile of a graduate, and I just wanted to recognize the students. Uh, again, this is now K twelve. We had Ole Kispert in kindergarten, Braxton Milner in first grade. Lila Rudd in second grade, Maya Wachter in third grade, Mason Henslin in fourth grade. Griffin Snyder in sixth grade, Caden Adrian in seventh, uh, Janay Keener in eighth grade. Hayden Sackett in ninth grade, Mason Bills in tenth grade. Uh, Selma Fernandez in eleventh grade and Andrew Edge in twelfth grade. So congratulations to those students. They were all recognized. Uh, the characteristic that was recognized was communication. Thank you. Um, motion to approve consent agenda.
So, second.
Motion from Dwayne, second from Brian, and welcome.
Thank you.
Um. Any questions, comments? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries, new business. Seven point one, discuss and approve twenty twenty-two, twenty twenty-three audit report. Jason?
Jason's here with Smith Schaefer to go through the audit report. I sent the copy of it to you as well. Um, you have that handout.
All right. Well, good evening. My name is Jason Boynton. It's Mr. Schaefer. It's to be with the board this evening to go over the results of the audit of the district financial statements for the year ended thirty of twenty twenty-three. Little housekeeping. I did pass out paper copies, even though you did receive electronic copies, but you have the hard copy of the a financial report. This is what we ensure our opinion on. The financial statements, lots of information. I'm not going to go through that. Very evening. Uh, there's a letter I'll talk about in a second, and then the PowerPoint which we have on screen here, but I also passed out a paper copy for you as well. So I'll use that to guide our presentations of this evening along, so. Well, the district contract with our firm, Smith Schaefer, to perform an audit of the district's financial statements. So we follow the accounting standards. We work with district staff. Uh, to uh, go over transactions, look at the accounting records, make sure everything matches up with outside sources, inside sources. We asked a lot of questions. Uh, based on all the work that we do, we are issuing an unmodified opinion on the district's financial statements. A lot of people call it a clean opinion. This means that as these uh, statements are presented here, we think that they're fairly stated in accordance with generally accepted accounting principles. Now, in addition to uh, doing the audit on the financial statements, the state requires us to do some work around legal compliance. And this is just making sure that in, at least in the items that we test, we we didn't find anything that said that the district's not following state statutes that are applicable to school districts. So no exceptions there. Uh, we don't have any control related findings uh, to bring to the board's attention. Uh, we were required to perform a single audit. A single audit is a special federal program audit. It can spend over seven hundred and fifty thousand in federal awards in a year. Okay, so there's a threshold there. If you go above that, then you have to do specific procedures just on those federal uh, grant awards and how those dollars are spent and making sure that we're spending those in accordance with uh, the federal guidelines. We did not have any findings there. And then the state also asks us to take a look at your student activity accounts and make sure we're in compliance with the requirements around student activities as well. And we didn't have any findings. Uh, lastly, there's a letter that we issue. That's a separate correspondence. It goes over kind of what I just talked about here, what our responsibility is that we're doing a financial statement audit. Uh, and then if we have any issues or concerns or problems relative to the district's accounting practices and the financial statements, we're required to bring that to your attention. Uh, but as I just went through, we did not, uh, for this last year. And not for several years, so. A quick summary of the audit. Uh, any particular questions on that before I will kind of jump into highlights from the financial statements that we put together? All right. So, uh, like I said, I'm not going to go through the detail on the on the financials. What we've done is we've summarized the information out of there, kind of take out a snapshot uh, of the district last year with a little bit more history there. So you want to start on chart three. But I put this chart up here. This kind of takes a look at the history of the district, at least going back to two thousand and sixteen. And this is the district's A D M, so our average daily membership. And so our student numbers is what drives the funding for the district. Uh, so that drives our revenue sources. Uh, so you can see historically, uh, well, if you look at twenty twenty-three, we ended the year with nine hundred and seventy-one A D Ms. That was so our funding was based on that number. Uh, it's down just a little bit, about four A D Ms from the year before, but historically, if you look back to twenty sixteen, we were at about one thousand one fifty-three. So obviously, we we see in the period of declining uh, enrollment here, uh, we're down about fifteen percent uh, in enrollments since two thousand and sixteen at the district. Uh, so keep that in mind as we're looking at some of the financial trends and highlights. So this first chart here takes a look at the overall revenues for the district. So we bring in fifteen point five million dollars total revenue from all sources within the district. Uh, we break that down into four categories here. You can see, so the most significant portion of that fifteen point five million is is our state aid revenue money we get from the state through the formula aid, special ed aid, all those other restricted uh, aids that they provide to the district. Uh, and it's all based on your student numbers as well. So you can see we about ten point two million of that fifteen point five comes from from the state. And what we're seeing is that number's been right around that ten million dollar mark. And so it's with our student numbers coming down, we're not getting as much uh, state aid per student. Uh, but they are getting some formula aid increases, so that's helping to offset that. But that's kept our revenue very flat over the last seven years. Uh, our next most significant revenue source is property taxes, and that was two point nine million. Sorry, just.
Do you want me to go back?
Yeah, I wasn't quite. It's a good way to push me along. Our property tax revenue is two point nine million of that fifteen point five. We get money in federal. Uh, but you'll see that number was higher the last three years, but that's a lot of the federal of COVID related monies that we've got here at the district. And then other revenue is going to be all our fees that we charge for like community ed, community service, um, food sales at the in the food service fund. Um. Donations, investment income. So it's an amalgamation of a lot of those other things. Uh, so moving on then, just relationally, how are we funded? You saw that state aid was our primary funding source. About two thirds of the district's money comes from state uh, aid, and then the other three categories make up the rest. There's a little shift compared to last year, but if you look at that federal number with that additional federal monies, that was a higher percentage of the total uh, pool compared to twenty twenty-three. Now, on the next chart, uh, just looking specifically at the property tax levy. Uh, so levy's made up of three components. We have our general levy, which is in the lighter color there. That was about two million dollars uh, for fiscal twenty twenty-two, and we included the twenty twenty-three data, but that's actually the fund that is the school year we're we're actually in now. So looking at the twenty twenty-two column. Uh, we get some money for community service, about a hundred and twenty thousand, and then debt services at the top at one point two million, uh, to help pay back the bonds uh, that the district has issued. On the next chart. So switching gears from revenues, here's where the dollars are spent. And again, the state requires us to uh, report in the financial statements spending by these categories. Uh, so the first category is administration. Uh, we spend just under nine hundred thousand in administration. And that was actually down from the year before. Support services was about seven hundred and sixty thousand. It's up. Uh, but I think we had some technology related expenses, district wide expenses go in that support services. So that's included there. Uh, regular instruction was up. That was about six point eight million dollars. Um, small amount vocational or special ed costs about one point nine million.
I got a question for you. How come the regular instruction is up with the reduced enrollment?
Well, so uh, regular instruction includes a lot of things. It's kind of our largest category grouping together. Uh, so so the increases in teacher pay is going to go in there. Um, the all the expenses associated with regular instruction. Uh, and obviously inflationary times or pressures on the budget. Uh, so that's increasing. Um, student activities is in there, which last couple of years um, was is is more relative to COVID when we didn't quite have as much student activity stuff going on. Uh, so that's higher. Um, I don't know, I mean, remember anything else specific to that?
The major points that would cost cost, what makes that happen?
Yep. Um. Structural support's relatively small. Pupil support, that's transportation. That was about one point three million dollars uh, down from the previous year, but I think we had some capital related expenses, which isn't within transportation in the previous year. Um, site buildings, all facility costs, that was about one point two million dollars. And then uh, food service and community service there are at the end. Those are where the dollars are spent. On the next chart. You look at just the general fund activity here, so for twenty twenty-three, the general fund had about thirteen point one million revenues. We spent about thirteen point six million. We actually decreased our fund reserves by a little over a half a million dollars. And we've had declines the last couple of years in our fund balance within the general fund, as we've been spending more than we've brought in. Uh, if you look at the next chart. So this takes a look at the fund balance. So you'll see the impact of that. And basically, there's three categories of fund balance here. There's unassigned, which is just our available general reserves. Assigned is monies that the board has set aside for specific purposes, and then restricted. Restricted dollars are when the state gives us revenues and we have to use them for specific purposes, and we haven't used those dollars yet. And so you can see with those deficit fund balances, the last two years, we brought our fund balance here in the yellow from about seven hundred and thirty-nine thousand unassigned down to about hundred and twenty-eight thousand dollars. Uh, our assigned, I'll show you that in a minute. That actually came down about seventy thousand, and then uh, our restricted, again, those are, and I'll show you a chart on those as well. End of the year at about a million dollars, down from a million to uh, the year before. Well, the next chart takes a look at those restricted balances. And so these are, again, for specific purposes. So we got money in student activity accounts that are meant for those. That's about two hundred thousand of that. A small amount of safe school, our operating capital, I think is basically zero. Uh, we've got M A uh, in there, L T F M, which is long term facilities maintenance. Uh, staff development, which is one that's uh, been growing the last few years, and then our gifted and talented program balances. So that makes up that million dollars to have those all together of that restricted funding. And then on the assigned, which is again board assigned, and board can use it for what it uh, seems fit. Uh, we have some money set aside for technology, a small amount here at the end of twenty-three. Uh, we had money about two hundred thousand set aside for turf repair and maintenance. Uh, but during the year, we decided to use some of that. We didn't actually use it for turf repair maintenance, right?
No, that 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 was the money we used to pay for the Zed building.
So that uh, brought that balance down by about a hundred and twenty thousand, and then student groups, which would be other groups besides those that are included in student activities. That's about fifty thousand. That's the general fund and the fund balance there. And so I think if you look at those, you know, that first chart that we looked at with A D Ms. And so the board's been dealing with the district with declining student numbers and trying to match up those revenues and those expenses, the costs of providing uh, the service and uh, the last couple of years, we've used up some of that fund balance. And so now we're getting to a point where that unassigned fund balance is relatively low, so we got to keep real close eye on the uh, financials going forward here to make sure that we don't deteriorate any further uh, below where we're at, because we're at a relatively low amount. Moving on from the general fund or food service fund. Um, sorry. That one. Uh, so food services experience. So you see that the trend down would be pretty expected based on our declining student number. If you have students, you have less food service related activities. Twenty twenty-two, you can see a large increase. That was when they went to full federal funding for all kids uh, for meals. So participation was a lot higher. Then we brought in a lot more revenues in a surplus. Uh, twenty twenty-three, we went back to the older model. You can see we still had a significant amount of revenues, but we did have a small uh, decrease in our fund balance of about twenty-eight thousand in twenty twenty-three, which then on the next chart, looking at the food service overall fund balance uh, dropped from two thirteen down to one eighty-five, but food service still has a really strong, healthy fund balance.
That was the dishwasher.
And then next up, in community service, again, our community service includes those activities like the community ed, uh, school readiness, uh, early childhood and family education, uh, SAC program, that's all running through adult basic education, all running through the community service. Uh, revenues were five hundred and eighty-three thousand in total. Our expenses were five fifty-seven. We had a twenty-five thousand dollar surplus there, and then on the fund balance chart, you can see that did increase our our fund balance on the next term. Uh, in the yellow there, uh, positive fund balances for some of those programs, totally a hundred and thirty-one thousand. And then we do have a deficit in a couple of programs, community ed and school readiness, although you, we did make some improvement there. You can see that in that deficit decrease from seventy-one to sixty-three thousand was last year. We have a debt service fund for our outstanding bonds. Uh, this is basically controlled through our levy and through state aids. Uh, we have about a hundred and forty thousand set aside for that with future levies. Uh, we'll, and then state state aid credits will will pay for the debt service of the bonds. It's got a couple more charts taking a look at our cost per A D Ms. So basically, this is taking the total cost in each of those categories, dividing by your A D Ms in each particular year. Uh, so when you look at district school administration and support, uh, we did see a little bit of an increase compared to the previous year. So this is Triton's district here. These last two columns is are from twenty twenty-two, this district's that that have A D Ms, this is state providing the data between five hundred and a thousand, which we fall in. Uh, and then the overall state average in the far right, so. Um. Total expenses there were were a thousand six fifty per student. That was up, but I mentioned earlier, we had some additional technology costs. If you remember, the actual administrative costs were down year on year. But I think the other thing you're seeing is when we had more students on a per student basis, our our, you know, administration support costs were less, but as the student numbers have come down, even though, you know, expense wise, it hasn't really gone up that much. If you look back at the history on a per student basis, it's costing more. Uh, regular instruction, uh, we spent about seven thousand per student uh, comparing the last year's uh, average of district between the five hundred and a thousand, that was about sixty-two hundred. Uh, so we're a little above that. And a little above the overall state average. Pupil support, which again is transportation primarily, counselor's health services on the next chart. And uh, there, we're right about where the districts are. Uh, probably if you extrapolated out to twenty twenty-three, we'd probably be right in that range. Uh, last year was higher with the capital purchases for transportation. And then lastly, total for the general fund overall, we spent about fourteen thousand total, uh, pretty similar to the average, less than districts across the entire state average. Uh, but again, you're seeing that number with the additional costs the last few years, as well as the declining numbers of that per student cost is going up, so. Uh, quick summary, um, district has an unmodified opinion on the financial statements. I talked about a clean opinion. Uh, we did see a reduction in the general fund balance of five hundred and seventy-two thousand overall. Uh, that brought that unassigned down to about a hundred and twenty-nine thousand, which is about one percent of our expenditures. Um. So uh, so U F R is also, they also do a calculation. The M D does a calculation of your fund balance to your unrestricted expenditure, which is a different calculation of that. But we ended the year with that about four percent of that, okay? But as I said earlier, when that fund balance starts to get down, uh, if we go negative uh, over two and a half percent negative, uh, they consider that to be statutory operating debt, which basically means that you have to submit a plan to the state and say, how are we going to improve the situation? So it come down in the last couple of years. Uh, so like I said earlier, managing um, the the budget and the finances is going to be very important, because we don't, I don't think as a district, we want to slip into that situation. Uh, food service expenditures uh, did exceed revenues, but we have healthy fund balance. There are a hundred and eighty-five thousand, and we had a surplus in uh, community service and overall positive fund balance, so. Uh, so that's kind of snapshot, um. Put it up and see if there may be any questions.
I'll make a motion to approve the twenty twenty-two, twenty twenty-three audit report.
Motion from Rebecca, second from Jim. Or uh, audit report. Any questions, comments? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Thank you.
All right. Thank you very much. Have a good evening, everyone.
Thanks, Jason. Um, seven point two, discuss and approve gifted and talented activity account.
Yeah, with having a gifted and talented, we have to have, they have to have their own activity account in order to, if someone wanted to donate money or or to have a regular budget, they have to actually have an activity account. So we haven't had one of those, and uh, we need that in order to be able to put money in them.
Make a motion. So I had a.
Motion from Dwayne, second from Brian. Any questions, comments? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries, seven point three, discuss and approve proposed certified staff seniority list for twenty twenty-three, twenty twenty-four.
That would be for the certified staff.
I'll move to.
Oh, second.
Um, motion from Jim, second from Wendy. And yeah, this sits out there for thirty days and then next month.
We'll approve it again next month.
Yeah. Uh, any other questions, comments? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Uh, seven point four, discuss and approve proposed classified staff seniority list for twenty twenty-three, twenty twenty-four. Same thing, just for the classified.
Make a motion to approve the classified staff seniority list. I'll second.
Motion from Wendy, second from Rebecca. For seven point four, any questions, comments? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Seven point five, discuss and approve policy updates.
I'll get those out to you at this, the next round of policy updates.
Are there a lot of them?
No.
Oh.
No, they're they're just, there there's some that they're recommending we reapprove, so. I just want to make sure I get them all, so do it once, not twice.
Okay. Uh, seven point six, discuss and approve Zed joint powers agreement.
This is basically the reconstructing the joint powers agreement without Pine Island. So this would be the six districts moving forward. And then it just kind of has, you know, when we ran into one pine island left, there were some, there had to be some unanimous decisions by boards, and it had to be by all boards. So it's just changed some of the language on that to make it
less messy.
Not so messy.
I'll move to approve.
Motion from Jim, second from Dale.
Oh, Dwy.
Dwy, sorry, Dwy. Um, for seven point six, any questions, comments?
So when do we do this? Is is that changing how we're doing like lunch and feeding everybody over there and stuff? Is that on the same schedule with this?
This, it it it's this is more or less the 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 agreement.
Right.
Who belongs, and if somebody wanted to get out, what would be the process for them getting out? And if somebody wanted to join, which we've already said.
Yeah.
We're not interested because we're we need to, we need to fulfill the needs of our students before we worry about adding another district, so.
I didn't know if it went deeper down.
No.
Uh, any other questions, comments? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries, student council report, I guess.
I don't see a student council number tonight.
Zed report. Uh, we were to have a meeting last week, but they get postponed. Their directors had illness in the family. And I haven't heard of a date yet, but uh, on the agenda, there was uh, half a dozen policies to get approved. Maybe some of them will be similar.
Mm-hmm.
And then um, a termination um, of the tech coordinator. And um, um, a lease agreement on the facilities. And I believe you might.
I shared that with you in the update today.
You probably haven't had a chance to see him, see it yet. It's it's a rental, basically what it'll cost if somebody wants to rent the facilities.
The one question the superintendent's brought up, there's not, it's not clearly identified as far as snow removal. Extracustodial, any of those kind of things in that rental agreement, and we want to make sure that that's covered. So if somebody rents the facility at night and there's a snowstorm, that the snow removal would be part of that rental agreement. Well, I think they're still working out the details on that.
But other than that, I really don't have, yeah. Unless there's a question. Uh, A D report.
Um, yeah, Corey couldn't be here. I basically, the boys volleyball is now slated to be a spring sport, and Corey said that what he'd like to do is um, do an interest survey of students. See if we have a number of students that are interested. He kind of has a number in mind, how many kids we'd need to have interested if we were going to have that. Um. So he's going to move forward with that, but the Minnesota State High School League did determine that it will be a spring sport. So there will be, there will be boys volleyball in the state of Minnesota this spring. Oh, and the other thing he did just, you know, with fall sports wrapping up, he he would uh, be bringing a season summary um, around the next meeting.
Winner will be certain.
Yeah.
Um. Seven ten, uh, principals report.
Yep, I I told them I'd cover for them tonight too, because they didn't have a whole lot. Shane's in the elementary. We have conferences tonight, tomorrow in the elementary. Um, Unity Day is Wednesday this week, along with uh, Service Learning Day um, for the high school students, and we have had one of our um, SRP drills, and we're planning more of those, and I think that that new protocol that we're using is is good. I I actually saw a New protocol that we're using is, is good. I, I actually saw a. Um, another school district that was having discussions about the differences between soft lockdowns and lockdowns and. I feel good about using the standard response, response protocol because it eliminates a lot of the uh, misinterpretation with the language. So. A lockdown is a, is a, a lockdown. Um, and there's not different levels of it. So. Using the standard per uh, response protocol with the holds and the secures, I think are a, a good move. And we also have. Um. Uh, a summer date, so we can have more people attend that training. Um, from the foundation this summer. They'll be doing another training in Rochester, so trying to get more people involved in that training. Because really what happens is when you identify. There's, there's like five different main uh, with the reunification plan. There's five major roles in a reunification. And the more people we can have trained in those roles, um, the better prepared we will be if we ever need to have one of those uh, reunifications. And that's all I really had for the principals.
I believe, or, or maybe the. Corn drive, I think is tomorrow.
Yes, correct.
Or maybe you had that. Okay, superintendent's report, sorry.
Uh, yeah, um, the sport court installation will be next week. And again, that all the, the. All of that was donated to the district, so very thankful for the people that have. Uh, donated the money for that. I think it'll be a real nice facility for our kids. Um, negotiations update, just a reminder, we have classified mediation on the twenty-seventh. Uh, certified, we have a tentative agreement. And study session on the twenty-fifth, um, Tahoe wanted to do a dinner and we do that at five thirty. Any questions?
So the SRO officer thing of the state, you know, it's having, putting more of the case on that.
Depends who you ask. Um, there's still a lot of school districts that have not brought them back. Um, the attorney general uh. Gave an opinion. The problem is for a lot of school districts, they're saying that's an opinion. And if somebody gets sued, AKA SRO officer, the opinion doesn't matter. So. We still have the same protocol in place where if, if our SRO needs to do, he will call for. An, a, a, an officer from the street because in-house SROs cannot. Be SRO officers like they used to be.
Right.
At this time, but they are trying to push again for another special session. I don't think it's going to happen. Just.
I just.
Yeah.
Anything else? And then, yeah, study session October twenty-fifth and then their next board meeting November twentieth. Any? Want to make a motion? To adjourn? All those in favor? Yeah, thank you.